The September fifteenth meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Prior to the start of each council meeting, which is generally the first and third Tuesdays of the month, we provide an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address us in an informal manner between 6:30 and approximately 6:55 in the council chambers. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, the subject matter that you wish to address, and your phone number. If time permits, after scheduled speakers have completed speaking, I will open up the floor to unscheduled speakers. These portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised, and again, if you have any questions on this, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412. Before we get started, I'd just like to make a few announcements. Fall is always a exciting time of the year when school starts and lots of other activities are going on, and I just wanted to highlight a little bit some activities that are city-sponsored that are coming up. The first one, starting the week end of September 18, 19, and 20, and also continuing the following Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the 24th to 27th, is the very best of 10 years of the one-act plays presented by the Eden Prairie Players. And they've already sold out the first night, they are close to selling out the second night, so if you're interested in seeing these productions, which are outstanding, they're presented at the Riley-Jakes Barn, you can contact the Eden Prairie Players online, edenprairieplayers.com, and order tickets. Or if you are interested in taking your chance, you can go on September 24th, which is a Thursday night, where you pay what you would like for the show. So please go. There's very limited seating because it is in the barn. I've gone a number of years, and the quality is wonderful. Also, coming up on September 26th and 27th is the Eden Prairie Art Crawl. It's a great event. Almost half of the people of Eden Prairie have either gone to this art crawl, participated in it, or at least know of it. You are invited into the home studios of artists, and everybody has provided a map, and you can move around the city and see what our artists within our community are able to do. Then, on Saturday, October 3rd, is the Fall Harvest Celebration, which is cosponsored by the Eden Prairie Historical Society. That is also out at the Riley-Jakes Barn area on Saturday, October 3rd, from 2:00 to 5:00. There's live bluegrass music, concessions, children's activities, and tours of the historic Doran Kemper House. So all three of those events are wonderful events, and I hope you'll participate. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
So moved.
Any items to add or pull?
I have a quick council member update.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Do you want to do it at that point that we get to? Okay. All in favor of the agenda? I'm sorry, do I have a motion for approval?
We do.
Okay. All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held on Tuesday, September 1st?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council meeting held that same date, September 1st?
Move approval. Second.
Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. That brings us to our consent calendar. Is there a motion for approval on items A through L?
So moved.
How are we doing this if we're pulling K? Do we move it second and then pull it?
No, you would move it minus K, remove K, and you would take action on K later.
Those are motion for?
Yeah, no one's seconding it, so you can. Do my motion of items A through L minus K.
Second.
And I would like to have discussion on topic L.
Okay. Before we vote, then, let's have discussion on topic L, which is the approval of an agreement with Ice Castles to provide an Ice Castle attraction at Miller Park. Mr. Gettle, do you want to address that, or Brad, do you have some specific questions?
Well, I guess my just general comments are, I know we had a number of people that commented, from residents commented about the appearance of the park and just, you know, some of the traffic issues and concerns, and just, you know, how was the park left after the event, and, you know, how did that work? I guess I'd just like to hear from staff, how did that work out in the end? How do we feel that our park is recovered after the event? And what kind of plans do we have for the future to make sure that we don't have any issues with those topics?
And someone wants to add to that list?
Oh, okay.
Just, I also had written into Rick when I read this on Friday or Thursday last weekend, just to ask again also, just to review revenue, and just show again that we, it not only had minimal impact on the park, that's what I hoped to hear, but also the revenue and the projections are going to be much greater next year, and also some of the anecdotal responses that we got back.
Thank you. So mayor and council, this would be, the agreement before you tonight is to enter in an agreement with Ice Castles for this attraction to come to the same location in Eden Prairie once again in 2015. And when we look at 2014 from the perspective of the city, the feeling was that the event was a success. The city, the rent that the city charged did recover all costs and then some in terms of, you know, a rental fee of $2,800 a month over a four-month period. The proposal here, then, to compare is that for this current year, it's proposed to be $3,500 a month, so there's an increase. The Ice Castles was and still is responsible for all the restoration above that, and there was some restoration that needed to be done following the first year that the attraction had been there. The positive thing that resulted from that is they actually added some drain tile to that area that should really, even though they're still going to be responsible for restoration, should make it even better situation this coming year. We also have, so also we have incentives where when the attendance is higher, the city collects more money. You can see that in the agreement, where if there's, you know, for every additional 10,000 people, there's a certain amount of dollars, and that was also slightly increased. As it relate, and also, the Ice Castles is responsible for the snow and ice removal in addition to the restoration. Traffic is a good question. I think it was the first weekend, for sure the first weekend, maybe the first two weekends, that traffic was an issue, but there was some work done in terms of exiting that improved the situation as the season went on. But even a further enhancement for the coming year is that Ice Castle plans to have time ticketing, where they would sell tickets at set periods of time. If you think about different attractions, you know, you're the 6 o'clock group, or the 6:30 group, or the 7 o'clock group, so they're instituting time ticketing, which should be for smoother traffic volumes. And then maybe stepping outside specifically the city operations, we did receive a lot of really good feedback from area businesses in Eden Prairie that felt that their business was enhanced by having the attraction Eden Prairie, from businesses that were close by to as the faraway as Alliance Tap, felt that they had received a positive response. So looking back on last year, the revenue received, the responsibility put on Ice Castles, moving forward with some work done in that area, and in adjustment to the dollar amounts, and some of the work with traffic, we think it would be another successful operation this coming year.
Great, thank you.
Did you want to speak again? Councilmember Case.
Do they bond anything for the restoration if they were to go away and go bankrupt?
Yes. So there's, they both have insurance, liability insurance for their entire event, and then I believe there's a bond that's tied to any restoration. I'll double-check, I can check with the attorney.
Robert Sane, yes.
Property insurance.
Okay. And then, do they participate in any way with the enhanced police traffic enforcement costs? Do we just kind of figure that's part of the rent?
Yeah. I would, I'm not aware of any major kind of burden on our police related to the traffic, so I don't know if, I don't think there was specific dollars.
Now, do you have anyone else there that, a couple days I went by early on, and the traffic was like way back, I just wondered, we had no extra police involvement in that?
I'm not sure on that first weekend what we did, but we were able to find better exiting related to the event, so that burden didn't happen a second or third time, but there may have been officers present in case that happened again.
And there wasn't, was there any conversation about the possibility of Ice Castles LLC hiring one or two or three, either overtime officers or traffic people themselves, or some of our reserve people? Is there need to have them help with traffic control?
That's something I can ask Mr. Lothammer, who was involved with the discussions putting the agreement together. I'm not sure what exact discussion they had with security. They have onsite staff, but I'm not sure the details about traffic and security, but I can ask Mr. Lothammer about that.
Otherwise, I really am pleased, and I did hear a lot of positives from the people of Eden Prairie, but also I think it was a great publicity, positive publicity for the city of Eden Prairie as well to have this event here. So as long as the, any long-term damage gets mitigated, which it sounds like it is very much, and there's also, you know, an added benefit to our taxpayers in that there's some revenue produced.
Yeah, and I'm fine with it as well. I think it was a very positive event. I visited it just to see what it was all about, and I think it seemed to be very well-received.
Did you crawl through all the tunnels?
I didn't crawl through every tunnel, no. I didn't go down the slide either.
I don't think I did, but the tunnels were kind of cool.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on items A through L minus K. Anything else to discuss? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. First public hearing tonight is Southwest Light Rail Transit Municipal Consent Plans. Mr. Gettle.
Thank you, mayor and council. If this looks familiar from the past, it's because you've done this before, provided municipal consent, considered municipal consent for the Southwest Light Rail Transit project, but due to changes in the project, it's back before you again this evening. We'd like to start prior to the public hearing with a presentation from the Metropolitan Council, the overseer of the project, Ryan Kronzer is here from the Metropolitan Council in the Southwest Project Office, and he's going to run through all the detail and background related to the project, and there is staff from that council here to answer any questions that the city council may have in addition to the staff prior to public hearing and consideration of the resolution.
Hi, thank you for having us today. I am standing in for Craig LaMouth, the project director, who became ill this morning, so he sends his regards, and we will go over a very high-level presentation of the municipal consent plans, and then we'll hold the public hearing. Southwest Project at this point is a 14.5-mile project. There's 32 bridges, two light rail tunnels, seven linear miles of retaining wall, 15 new stations, and one deferred station, 34,000 average weekday riders in 2040. This slide summarizes some of the changes that happened based on the score reductions that occurred this past summer. As you're all aware, the Mitchell Road Station was deleted, and the Eden Prairie Town Center Station was deferred. With regards to parking rides, that Mitchell Road parking ride was deleted, and the Eden Prairie Town Center was deferred. Other sites along the line decreased at Belt Line and at Blake, in St. Louis Park and in Hopkins. We also decreased in downtown Hopkins, Opus, and in the Golden Triangle Station. Important to you here is the Southwest Station remained unchanged at 450 stalls of new parking ride spaces, and we increased stalls at the Louisiana Station, St. Louis Park, and at the Shady Oak Station in Hopkins. Some other reductions, we reduced a storage space of our LRVs to 30, previous it was 36 light rail vehicles. We modified the station at Shady Oak to save some costs there, and also did some refinements at the OMF site in Hopkins as well. So those total reductions were $250 million, and the list of points retained, which is a list of 15 of the 17 stations, 94% of the ridership, 90% of the corridor length, 96% of the jobs, and also very important, we maintain that connection to Southwest Station, the multimodal aspects of that station. So I'm going to do a quick, high-level flyover of the plans, starting here at Southwest Station. It's a structured parking lot. Station is actually underneath the station, as we've talked about in past with you all at council workshops. Goes around southwest on a bridge structure over Technology Drive, then over Prairie Center Drive, up behind Bachmann's, and that's that same view. Kind of up going between Costco and then the Lincoln Park Apartments and the Water Tower. This is the location of the deferred station. The elements, there is a access drive to some infrastructure, but then the roadway, as previously proposed, is, would be deferred. Moving on, we're crossing 484 on a bridge, and this is going, passing Viking, going up to Valley View Road. This bridge here has been modified slightly, right here, sorry, this mouse is a little funny. We modified that bridge and gained a few seconds of runtime. Paralleling 212, coming over Nine Mile Creek on another bridge, and then into the Golden Triangle Station here. Then we continue on a bridge structure up over Shady Oak Road, Highway 212, and landing on the west side of 212, turning the corner into City West Station adjacent to the Optum Development. There's a parking ride here, a surface lot of 160 stalls. As we parallel 62 out of City West, we go under Highway 62 in a tunnel and enter into the city of Minnetonka. Okay, so the municipal consent process is based on state statute. It's for all cities, local cities and county, to approve the plans. These are the physical elements that the municipal consent governs. It's the light rail tracks, station location, where the operation maintenance facility is located, location of freight tracks, and other LRT system elements. A little bit about the process, our municipal consent plans were submitted to the cities and the county on July 23rd. The Met Council in Hennepin County held a joint hearing earlier this month, and we're in this middle low box here with the cities holding public hearings. Minnetonka held their public hearing last night, Minneapolis this morning, Eden Prairie and Hopkins tonight, and St. Louis Park next week. So the action, based on the current schedule, is to be completed by October 11th. A few, a quick point about next steps, we are working fiercely towards a 60% design plans. These are a list of some of the key details that we're developing further as we go on with this project development. And that's all I have for a quick overview.
Okay. Thank you. Council, any questions for Ryan? None at this time?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ready for public hearing? Okay, we're having a public hearing on this. It's our second public hearing on municipal consent, but we've got a revised plan. We had people sign up outside if they were interested in addressing the council during this public hearing portion, but of course, even if your name is not on the list, if you would like to speak, we would like to hear from you. We're going to restrict comments to about three minutes, and we will start with Donna
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. I want to thank you, I want to thank you in advance for voting in favor of ruining our city. The Southwest Light Rail is not a Democrat or Republican issue, it's a common sense issue. As I have said numerous times at numerous city council meetings, the Southwest Light Rail line does not have the population density for it to succeed or turn a profit. Taxpayers will be paying for this light rail forever. Eden Prairie will now resemble the Chicago Loop with an elevated train traveling over Prairie Center Drive next to the bucolic Purgatory Creek Park, where we just spent several hundred thousand dollars for a veterans memorial. Businesses like Culvers and FedEx and Kinko's will be torn down to make way for the train. The light rail will bring crime to our peaceful city. According to WCCO, there are 858 incidents in a six-month period at the Lake Street Midtown Station. Mall of America had 747 incidents. Franklin Avenue had 711 incidents, while Downtown East Station had 564 incidents. Central and Snelling Stations on the Green Line had 481 and 478 incidents respectively. Is this what you want for Eden Prairie? Traffic-wise, the light rail will travel across several of the most dangerous intersections in Eden Prairie and crosses in front of red stones, a bar. Light rail plus alcohol equals disaster. Instead of a beautiful city, we will have ugly chain-linked fences and unsightly overhead wires slicing through our hometown. Traffic will be a nightmare through Eden Prairie during construction of the light rail. You have ignored the fact that light rail is the second deadliest form of transportation behind motorcycles, or do you just not care about the welfare of your citizens? If any person in this city is harmed or killed by the light rail or becomes a victim of a crime committed on the light rail, I will blame you, the Eden Prairie City Council. You ignored the will of the people of the city. You did not give us the courtesy of a vote on whether or not we wanted light rail in our hometown, although you expect our taxpayer dollars to pay for this boondoggle. You seem to forget the city council works for the citizens of Eden Prairie, and it is my opinion that we won't even have the courtesy of an unbiased vote by our mayor since she serves on the Met Council's Corridor Management Committee, which advises the Met Council on all issues related to the design and construction of the Southwest Light Rail project, and she's also a policy board member of the Partnership for Regional Opportunity, whose goal is to advance a 21st century transportation system in the Twin Cities, and we expect her vote to be unbiased? Last month, Councilman Ron Case told me at an open podium that it does not matter if Eden Prairie Council votes for municipal consent or not, because the Met Council will have the final say. I spoke with Sam O'Connell of the Met Council at the HRCCA Hennepin County Public Hearing a few weeks ago in Minneapolis, and told her what Councilman Case said. Ms. O'Connell said it is very important to get municipal consent from the cities along the Southwest Light Rail route. So who's lying, Mr. Case or Ms. O'Connell? For each and every?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker tonight is Adam Hoxter.
This is the first city council meeting I've ever been to. I've lived in Eden Prairie for two years. I admit I'm somewhat of a reluctant resident. I moved here from, to St. Louis Park from Denver. My wife kind of won me over on the city, and then she said, "I'd like to buy a house." So we looked all over, and we end up in Eden Prairie. And I had that vision of people 20 years older than me that are all going to Applebee's and Ruby Tuesday's, and it just seemed like a hellscape. But the concept of Southwest Light Rail coming to the city made it plausible and livable for me to come here. All I thought of Eden Prairie before I came here was a mall no one goes to and horrendous traffic. Living out here has made me hate the name Tracy, because every time I want to go downtown, I get on 212, I get on 62, I see a ton of red brake lights, and Tracy. I really am excited for Southwest Light Rail to come here. I think it's absolutely critical for this part of the city. As far as the financial cost, you know, we've spent tons of money on freeway interchanges and everything else, and unless you want to ram a freeway through this exact same wetlands you don't like, you want to preserve, I don't see a better option than this. So thank you for your time.
Ruth, I'm sorry, is it Churchill?
No.
Churchill. Churchill, okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the personal side of this issue. I'm not going to do a data dump. I think, I'm sure you've heard ad nauseam enough about that. I moved to Eden Prairie 40 years ago. We didn't even have a grocery store then, but we decided this is a great place, we would raise our families, sink our roots, and we've watched Eden Prairie grow up around the, over the years, around us. And I think the city council and your predecessors have done a great job. We owe you a great, a great deal of gratitude for that. However, I feel like we have every amenity that we could possibly want in Eden Prairie. We have a solid tax base, we have lots of diversity, old, young, rich, poor, lots of ethnic groups, lots of churches and religions, and I think we have a wonderful lifestyle and a wonderful culture here. But what you're hearing often from people, and have heard, this will probably be the last time you'll hear from people, the public, in a, in a open forum, is fear. Fear that everything we have created, everything you and your predecessors have created over the years, is going to be diminished as a result of light rail. We're on the cusp of what I think is an historic change for us. When light rail goes through here, it's going to eviscerate right through the heart of the city, and I think it will damage what we have created. We don't really want more people in the city. We have a great tax base, we have everything we need, almost all of the development has been done. I don't know where you'd put a whole lot more. So why are we wanting to have more of a tax base? We don't want to provide free access to criminals who will come in. This is a personal issue. We've invested a lot of time and energy into what we've created here, what you've created here. We don't really want to see something else bad happen here. I don't want to subsidize riders who don't pay. I don't think that should come out of my tax dollars, and I don't want to see my friends, my family, or any community member blood on the street. So I would say that light rail is a game of chance. If you vote yes on this, you are going to lose control of the outcome, because we have no knowledge of what's going to happen. We've invested so much, and we want, as citizens, and we want to maintain the lifestyle, the quality of life, so we ask that you vote no and maintain control of the outcome and the future of Eden Prairie. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Churchill. The next speaker is Roxanne Johnson, followed by Leslie Sharpen. Leslie, if you want to move forward, so you're set to go after Ms. Johnson.
Mayor and council members, anything I say tonight has already been said or written by others, including myself. I have been up here before to state my concerns and my opposition. I've also sent comments via the all-council email stating the same. Much to my great disappointment, it appears that there is no recourse anymore. You have made the decision for us. You can say you're representing the citizens in our community. Truthfully, while I respect the other citizens' votes, and I know that many things that you do, all do for Eden Prairie are from your love and concern for this community, I didn't vote for you, with one exception. My votes didn't count in this case. The LRT was decided by an appointed, not elected, Met Council. You're supporting it, and we pay the price in so many ways. We are not the only community to oppose the LRT plans. More millions of dollars we don't have for something we don't need and don't want because of social engineering and lifestyle control. Most of us will not live to see this pay for itself. We burden our kids and our grandkids and beyond. I've lived in Eden Prairie for most of my adult life. This is not the America which I learned about in school, pledged allegiance, played the National Anthem on my trombone in high school, college, and community bands. You have made your decision. I still think it's a bad decision. There are many convenient ways to move people around economically and safely without tearing up our city, without spending multiple millions of dollars and disrupting traffic, shopping, businesses, commuting, visitors, and the life so many of us have treasured for two generations and more. With all due respect, it's a sad day for Eden Prairie. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Leslie will be followed by Jeff Strait. Leslie will be followed by Jeff Straight.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council and everyone else. This is the second time I've ever appeared at a meeting, not before you, but at a meeting. Previous one was at the 212 Toll Road, which was eventually thrown out, thankfully. In other cities, light rail does not provide profit. It is expensive. It has been written and calculated that it would cost 10 times the amount of money put into a bus service, which we already have, to replace that bus service with light rail. That's what we're doing right now. I mean, that's what you're considering. Spending hundreds of millions of dollars for something that already exists in a different form, and it's still transit. We have another issue, or rather, I have another issue, and that's just that it's illogical. Why would we want to have light rail, which is on one track, and if anything happens, you can't move to another track? With bus, you change to a new road. Recently, whenever, when the Blue Line had a problem and they were blocked, they ran the train down to the blockage. And then what did they do? They transferred everybody to a bus. So, it makes no sense to me to replace a bus service or go in competition with a bus service that already provides the transit between Eden Prairie and downtown Minneapolis with light rail that costs 10 times as much, and it's hundreds of millions of dollars that could go to other projects, including repair of roads and bridges. I think that's about it for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpen. Jeff Straight, followed by Bob and Hope Kennedy. I don't know if they're tag teaming it or if they each want to speak.
Which one?
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, guests, city staff. My name's Jeff Straight. I live at 15021 Summer Hill Drive. The purpose of the hearing is to comment on the changes to the plan. I'd like to say I deeply regret the removal of Mitchell Road Station from the plan. I regret the deference of the Town Center Station. However, costs have to be met. And I support the changes in this plan 100 percent. And I encourage you to vote your approval for the municipal consent tonight on that. I've looked at it very carefully, as many of you know. I've attended many, many meetings, done a lot of reading, not only with people here in Eden Prairie, but also in the five cities. I'd like to make a personal comment, now that my stand for this is made. My family's lived here for about 22 years, and I've followed the development and the debates over the use of the light rail trail that goes through, slices through Eden Prairie, it's now a bike trail, as well as LRT. And I can't think of a process that has been more open than the one for LRT in our area. More open. Boards and panels with community residents from Minneapolis, St. Louis Park, Hopkins, Minnetoka, Eden Prairie have been engaged in this for at least 12 years. They've been showing up to meetings. They don't always agree, but the process is not contaminated. It is democratic. The people have spoken to all of these committees. I've been part of them. And so, tonight, some comments were made that democracy is dead in Eden Prairie. It is not. It is very much alive. It may not be a direct vote for this particular part of the process, but the process has been open, available to people for many, many, many years. Now, about the future look of our city. We live in a great city with lots of parks and wonderful amenities. I believe that our people are strong enough to defend whatever comes our way in terms of our parks' integrities, our trail systems, our crime rate, everything. So, that's about all I have to say, and I'll probably be making further comments on what's going on here tonight in a different venue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob and Hope Kennedy, followed by Steve Smith.
Well, since everybody's told me how long I've been here, I've been here since 1962. I've watched this city grow from a city of 6,000 people to where it is now. I've watched the changes occur. Some I've been not so happy about, some I have been. I like the fact that we have parks and that we've done some pretty wise development work. I think this light rail is a ridiculous thing. We don't have the density. I came from Chicago. I know what rail is like. We don't have the density. And tell me, it's not a wonderful system. And we do have a good city here, and you're going to screw it up with this thing. You're going to change it dramatically, and I'm not going to represent myself. I have two children who live here, eight grandchildren, so I represent a lot of taxpayers. I'm going to probably tell them to get the heck out of this city, the way things are going. Bye.
Thank you. Steve Smith, followed by Sheila Kinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmen and women. First of all, I want to thank a couple of you for responding to my emails. I also emailed the All Council, and it's always nice when government representatives email back. I get very excited with that. Mr. Case, you mentioned that municipal consent is confined to agreeing or disagreeing with most recent cuts. How come none of the cities have said no? That's what I want to know. If you said no, you might make it to the front page of the Star Tribune. I've moved to Eden Prairie nine years ago. I'm raising three beautiful young kids that will be saddled with this train to nowhere. I work near the light rail right now. I cross the lines every day and look at the lines and say, "Boy, those are funny. They've been around 100 years, I bet. Oh, no, the city, I got rid of them a long time ago, but we're putting them up in Eden Prairie again." Your forefathers that were here before buried all the lines. You don't see any power lines up there. They were smart enough to do that. That's what we like about Eden Prairie. We don't have the density to support this train. The main line by the Mall of America has the world's biggest mall, or America's biggest mall, an international airport, two downtowns, two professional stadiums, and it's empty or near empty every day except a Twins game or a Vikings game. What does this line have? Yes, there will be some workers that will be on it, but they certainly could take the train. Our Southwest bus transit right now is a great service, and I feel like we'll be cannibalizing something that's already made. If you want more buses to go, let's get some more buses then. At $1.77 billion for a 15-mile train, what could this state, what could this county, what could this city do with that kind of money? I would like you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm missing the kids' soccer game for this, and I think I feel like a lot of people do, and this is just a waste of time. We were here last May. It was overwhelming opposition at the public hearing. Mr. Case wasn't here for that, but I think Brad was the one who voted no, and the rest of you voted to move forward with this. This is a $1.8 billion project. It was $1.25 billion in 2013. People know that, two years ago. Over $180 million in tax money has already been spent on the project by the various state, county, and local municipalities, even though our legislature hasn't approved the state funding needed to fund the project. So, it's not just you guys that don't listen. It's a lot of government that isn't listening to the people right now. The bulk of the project is paid for, of course, by our federal government, and we're told we should try to get some of our tax dollars back. Our country's over $1.8 trillion in debt, and you guys don't care. You're taking on a project that we do not need. You tell anyone you live in Eden Prairie, and oftentimes you'll hear people mention what a disaster getting around the mall area is and the wayfinding to major highways. We are simply not known for our logical transportation planning in Eden Prairie, with the bright exception of the Southwest Transit Line. Now, we will welcome in an L-Train. I was thinking about coming up here and singing the A-Train for you for a little bit, but we're welcoming an elevated train 16 feet off the ground that goes up a very, very steep grade over some very, very bad soil, which is what we were saying a year and a half ago. I think people were asking you to wait for the Environmental Impact Study to come in. It came in. It drove up the cost. Now, the cities have to pitch in more money for this project, when I pretty much remember being told all along that as city taxpayers, we wouldn't be paying anything for this project. Goes right along Purgatory Creek, goes right by Lifetime Fitness, Jake's Bar, Walmart. Where are the jobs with this thing? I mean, give me a break. You guys talk about wanting good-paying jobs. They're not by the mall. They're not by the mall, and you guys know that. So, you had an opportunity when the cost went up to, you know, you advocated keeping this last stop, or getting rid of Mitchell, thank God, at some little bright spot, but keeping that last stop at the Southwest Station, when you could have saved taxpayers all around the state and around the country for that matter, millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars by just taking it into the Golden Triangle, which I don't know if you noticed, it's not so golden. Do you see all the lease signs there? I know you're doing the build-it will come, and all the business will come, and the people will come. It's not going to happen. People are leaving. I was at National Night Out the other night. Kids in my neighborhood go to Chapel Hill, St. Hubert's, private schools all over the place, a couple at Spanish Immersion. The terrible decisions that have been made by the school district and the city council, I disagree with some folks here. I moved here 10 years ago, so I want to stay here. The reason why, it's a fantastic location to live. You can get to the airport when 494 isn't that congested, and you can get downtown in 25 minutes. Why are you building a train that we don't need? It makes no sense. Listen to the people and don't mistake your easy elections. You all have been in office for a very long time. And thank you for your service, by the way. I do want to say that. You guys attend a lot of meetings. But, you've been in office. Don't mistake, you know, somewhat light turnout here. One thing I learned from knocking on doors, people are thinking more and more that their voice just doesn't matter anymore in government. And there's a lot of people out there who just simply don't share your passion for spending other people's money, and they're not here tonight. But, I can tell, if you look at a little bit of the group here, this is representing a large number of people. I lost my primary, lost by a lot, but I still had a thousand-some votes. That's representative of some portion of the population, and all I heard was what a disaster light rail is, from Republican primary voters. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of our scheduled speakers. Is there anybody else that wants to address the council that hadn't signed up? Okay, since we don't have you on the sign-up form, if you'd give your name and your address for the record, please.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Jeffrey Simon, 8900 Bradford Place in Eden Prairie. I would like to make an observation. The observation is that there are many, many arguments against the light rail. There are some arguments, probably, for the light rail. People have expressed opinions, but it doesn't seem to me that the decision process of the Met Council or of the cities is really, you know, it's like, don't confuse me with the facts. You know, if this is a giant subsidy, and it will bring crime and all these other allegations, I don't want to hear any of those facts. We're going ahead because we want to ride the train, and we want to have social engineering. We want to have the people living in these corridors and high-rise houses, and we want Thrive 2040, and we want Agenda 21, and that's the reason why the Met Council and all the city councils are going to just go like sheep and go along with this decision, not because any of the facts. They're impervious to the facts. They're doing it because they're buying into a social planning agenda. And such social planning agenda gets us things like we've seen in other countries, gets us things like we've seen in Baltimore, in Chicago, and places like that. So, if we want Eden Prairie, the future of Eden Prairie is to be like Baltimore, yeah, we got to have that light rail, because it's essential to have that light rail to make Eden Prairie like Baltimore. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I don't see anybody else that wants to speak. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're being asked to give municipal consent on the changed light rail route discussion. Councilmember Aho.
I just have a couple of questions, and these are probably directed more at staff than the project office. And these are questions that have been asked of me by residents and business owners. And so, I've probably asked these questions before in the past and have the answers, but I think this would be a good time to ask them again in a public forum, especially when we're being asked for municipal consent. So, one of the questions I have is, have we completed a traffic study at the Southwest Station with the projected 34,000 daily boardings projected by 2040? So, in other words, because we've now eliminated the Mitchell Station, you know, it's really going to change the makeup of the line and where people are coming to start riding on the line. And I think that's really going to have a large impact on the number of people that are going to come to and go from the Southwest Station location. And so, we completed a traffic study on the projected traffic and the impacts to our local businesses with that 34,000 riders.
Yes, councilmember and mayor and councilmembers, we did ask and worked very closely with the project office to determine, based on existing and future land uses, traffic that we see right now because of Southwest Transit and all the businesses in that area, looking at 2040, I think we started 2030, but as the process progressed, we actually moved into 2040. And we did a rigorous analysis of all the transportation system along Technology Drive, Prairie Center Drive, up at Highway 212 to determine, does that operate at an acceptable level of service? And that is a requirement of the project, that conditions not be in failure mode by 2040. So, there are improvements that are scheduled with the project to make transportation improvements for vehicles and pedestrians along Prairie Center Drive, at the Highway 212 off-ramp, also at Technology Drive and Prairie Center Drive, and then also coming into the Southwest Station parking ramp and where those businesses are located. That was done not only at the Southwest Station location, but also as we looked at the Golden Triangle Station, the City West Station, Mitchell Station, when that was on the table, and even with the deferred Town Center Station. So, that was something that was important to us, that we don't degrade the existing system that we've built.
And even with the reductions in the project, we still think that there's going to be enough improvements to the local infrastructure that we're not going to be degraded to a point where it's unacceptable.
Yes. The information that we've seen through the traffic analysis is that they will operate at acceptable level of service. There is one intersection that we're continuing to have conversations with the project office, and that would be the intersection of Flying Cloud Drive and Technology, and understanding how the train and vehicles are going to share that intersection to ensure that it operates at an acceptable level of service. That is one that we want to see further analysis on, and that is included in the resolution for municipal consent.
Okay, good. One of the other questions that I've had a fair number of people ask me is, is the city of Eden Prairie being asked to fund or donate any funds to the project as a result of the revised, you know, plan to save project costs? And how are we looking at providing our share of that reduction?
Yes. Again, to answer that question, we are looking at the possibility of dedicating land that was acquired through the Optum site. That would be land necessary for the City West Station. We've also looked at the cost of building West 62nd Street, which is a roadway that UHG needs to build for their development, and that would also provide service to the City West Station. So, those are costs that are being looked at as in-kind contributions. We are also taking a look at whether or not the aesthetics of the entire alignment is what our community wants to see. There's talk about, what do the bridges look like? Can they have enhancements, particularly by Purgatory Park? Also, discussion of the catenary polls. So, those are things that we haven't made commitments on yet, but I think that we're going to want to... think that we're going to want to take a close look at to see if, do those fit the character of our community.
So basically what you're telling me is that we're not being asked as a city to designate any or donate any, any general fund expenditures or capital funds to the project?
We are not being asked to provide money to build the LRT line. That is included in the funding package that the Met Council, the state, HICRA, and Hennepin County are putting together with the FTA. There may be costs like sewer lines. We're currently televising all of our sewer lines that would run underneath the alignment, storm sewer lines, water lines, if they're in conditions where they need to be repaired. That is something we would look at adding to the project because that's the right time to do that. But that is for city infrastructure, infrastructure that's outside the needs of the LRT project.
Okay, thank you. Those are the two questions I had for right now.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, council? Are you ready to make a motion?
Mayor, I do have some comments that I'd like to make. Do you want me to wait till after the motion is made, or do you want, do you want, do you want to do comments now?
Uh...
Those are my questions, and I just have some comments to make.
Yeah. Why don't we do a motion, and then people can make comments up ahead?
All right, thank you.
Comments. Is there a motion?
I can make the motion. I move to close the public hearing, adopt the resolution approving the physical design component of the revised preliminary design plans for the Southwest Light Rail project within the city of Eden Prairie.
Second. Discussion.
Okay. I do have some comments. So I'd like to commend the, the project office and the project for the process and all the communications. I think, you know, they've really done a commendable job to reach out to all the communities and reach out to the people and include a lot of people. And there's been countless meetings, as we all know, on, on the project. Not saying that I agree with the outcome necessarily, but I think they've done a commendable job to do that. Tonight, as a city, we're really being asked for municipal consent just on the physical design components. And it seems to be, a lot of people seem to be not really understanding that, that that's what we're being asked for. We're not being asked whether or not Eden Prairie accepts light rail into our community and whether we want it or not. We're, we're just being asked to choose whether or not we agree with the, the design changes. And so I think that's a big concept for everyone to, to understand what we're voting on tonight. I've heard really from many residents that have a lot of concerns, and we heard some tonight. I've heard from businesses that have concerns. And really, what I want to focus on is the specific design elements of the revised plan, because that's really what we're being asked to, to comment on today and to ask for consent on. And so I'll just go through a couple of items that I have concerns with. One, number one is, I think that, I've heard from businesses that they feel that they'll be harmed by the route as it runs along Highway 212 on the northern side of Eden Prairie. And as a matter of fact, tonight, we received another letter from a, from a business being represented with that concern. Number two is where the line runs next to the hotels on Flying Cloud Drive, there's going to be a crossing over the entrance to those hotels. And anytime you have a crossing, you have to have some kind of bells or some kind of a noise to, to, before safety. And I really think that's going to be very close to those hotels, and I think that's not going to be very conducive to restful sleep in those hotels. So I am concerned about that. Number three, and I think someone mentioned that tonight, I am concerned about the bridge over Technology Drive in front of what I consider one of our finest parks, Purgatory Creek Park, and really a beautiful veterans memorial. I'm afraid that that's going to really detract from the serenity and the, and the beauty of that setting. And that does, that does concern me greatly. Number four, the parking at Southwest Station right now is pretty fully utilized with Southwest Transit. I mean, we have about nine hundred stalls approximately with Southwest Transit there, and that gets really utilized quite well. And with the elimination of the Mitchell Station, I'm really concerned that that parking that's going to be added for Southwest LRT is not going to be enough capacity for all that, all those people coming now only to Southwest Station and not spreading, spreading that load out between Southwest Station and Mitchell Station. So that, I have a, I have a concern about that. I think there's going to be a conflict for that parking space. Another concern I have is, as being a member of the board of Southwest Transit, I know we've developed a memorandum of understanding with the project office between Southwest Transit and the project, that Southwest Transit will continue to be the local provider of service and also be able to continue to provide our prime service, which is our express bus service to downtown. I am concerned that that may be threatened at a future date if the project, if the light rail doesn't see the ridership that they expect and anticipate. I'm concerned that, you know, funding will be an issue, become an issue, and that potentially we would have our funding cut at Southwest Transit. And, and that does concern me because I think people really appreciate the level of, the quality of service, the level of service that we provide, and it is an award-winning transit service. And I am concerned that that may be changed for our residents. I am also concerned, even though we've heard, one of the questions I asked of Robert Ellis was about the traffic at Southwest Station without that Mitchell Station, I am concerned that that traffic level at that station is going to become onerous. I think it's, it's already a very busy place now with the Southwest Transit, but I think with the addition of everyone coming to that, that transportation hub, I think it's going to be a very, very busy place. And I'm just not sure that we've, we've anticipated the, the traffic that levels that we will see with that, with that process. Finally, I guess I believe that Eden Prairie and the Twin Cities needs a robust multimodal transportation system, really to remain competitive and vibrant. And I think we have an award-winning transit service provider with Southwest Transit that is really very flexible, meets our needs, and can easily be scaled up or down based on demand. And I guess for those reasons, I am going to, I plan on voting in opposition to the municipal consent of the design changes tonight.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your list of concerns. I think a lot of us share a lot of those same concerns. Councilmember Nelson.
Yes, I must say that I do share one of your concerns with the capacity at Southwest Station for parking. I do know that they're increasing it at Shady Oak, and that may take some people that are coming from elsewhere. I do think the bus system will be a great way to bring people in from further west into this area. And, you know, I would love to have, you know, one station put in in the major center area now, but the fact that it can be put in is, is good. I do think light rail is important for both this community and the whole city. We, if you looked at the age of all the people that spoke, many of the people out there had lived in Eden Prairie for a long time, had been around for a long time. The one young person who spoke was very excited about light rail. I think that goes all over the place. Over the last couple of years, I've had all kinds of people that don't show up at these meetings, but as I go to some other meeting or, you know, see them at social events, they'll say, do you think light rail is really going to come here? Oh, I hope it does. You know, please tell me it's going to come. And I said, well, it's not going to come as soon as you're hoping it's going to come. But in general, and our city surveys have also showed that there was a high percentage of the population that was, really wanted this to come in here, either that or didn't have any opinion. But I don't think it's going to be the end of our buses. I think the multimodal process is a good one, and we'll continue that one. And I would like to point out that buses don't pay for themselves either, neither do roads. All kinds of transportation is expensive. But a lot of our business community is very excited about ways to get their employees in and out of here. It will maybe make the roads less congested for those of us who want to continue driving our cars. And that's part of what the idea is for it. Also, the federal dollars, if they're not spent here, they'll be spent in another city. It's not as though they're not going to be spent. And so the question is, is do we bring the development and the jobs and the possibilities here, or do we let it go to someplace in Texas or someplace in Colorado or some other part of the country? I would like to see it here. We have place, people like United Healthcare that wanted this coming enough, so they gave the land for the station. And many other large companies lie along it. It's not just the mall. If it was just the mall, we wouldn't be talking about this. It is because there's a lot of employers where it does come in. So even though I'm not a hundred percent happy with the changes, though I'm glad we saved money overall, and, you know, we had to go back, it couldn't keep climbing, I do think it's time to get this line going again and that we do support it and that we do encourage them to put in our station as soon as possible, even in the initial, if suddenly the money is there. And that we make sure that as it comes through Eden Prairie, that the looks are nice, are as nice as can be made, and the promises that we've made to upgrade the looks around the park, I think is important. And I think our staff knows that. So I do plan to vote for this, and I think it will be something that will be important to a lot of businesses, a lot of different age groups of our citizens who seem to want this.
Thank you. Who are you next? Okay, councilmember Wixton.
Yes, thank you. I also will be supporting this municipal consent again. I have supported it the last time as well. I do want to say that I appreciate councilmember Aho's concerns. I do share many of those. But my hope is that what we're voting on is this physical design and preliminary, preliminary design plans, so that we will get some of the questions answered as we go along. I believe that is part of the process. So that being said, I have spoken before about my daily experiences as a, as a commuter that has to drive a long distance. And I can tell you that I can't get to Minneapolis in twenty-five minutes because of when I need to leave. We have a serious, serious problem in our region that needs to be addressed. So I know it was stated a number of times that this is not needed. Yes, it is needed. You can't just look at the immediate today and say the bus service is going to do it. We have looked out into the future, and we believe that this is the right direction to go in. Sometimes it's tough being a city council member where you have to make decisions that not only impact today, but impact twenty years or twenty-five or thirty years into the future. But that is what you elected us to do. So again, I will vote for this. I believe in it. It is needed.
Thank you. Councilmember Case.
We all have our personal opinions on the validity of light rail itself, on whether $2 billion, 1.7 should be spent in this way at this time in this project. And our vote, I want to be very clear, because I have been trying to be as honest as I can back in emails to people, and I stand by everything I've written. Our vote does matter, but only in the context of what we're being authorized to vote on tonight. We have not been empowered to vote LRT up or down. It reminds me back when we were talking about expanding the airport back in ninety-eight, ninety-nine, two thousand. We were not empowered to allow or not allow the expansion of that airport. We could argue our perspective. But sometimes the legislature makes it such that cities have limited power for, for a reason, for regional efficacy at the moment. So just, again, to be really clear, and I think Brad, you hit it well on the head, that tonight, we're being asked to vote, do we agree basically with this design components only as they impact Eden Prairie, and specifically the changes? Because we, last time, got the chance to vote municipal consent on that project. Now there've been some changes, and we are being asked, in fact, to be very specific, do we approve of the physical design component of this revised plan? That's, that's the very tight purview, the context that we're being asked tonight to vote on. That's incredibly different than Ron Case vote on whether you want LRT in general, this, this line to be in existence at all. That's not where, what we're empowered to vote on. So to, in fact, it would be, I think, a tremendous misuse in democracy if we used votes like this in a cheap way, in some way to send a message or something like that. That's not what this is about. This is, do we approve of the physical design components in this revised plan as they impact Eden Prairie? Yes or no? That's it.
Thank you. Appreciate all of your comments, and I think I agree with pretty much all the comments that are made. I think we all have the same information that we've heard that's out there. We just kind of come to different conclusions. But focusing on the change in the design, the infrastructure changes, I also deeply regret the loss of Mitchell Station. I think that's, I think that's a big mistake, and we need to be cognizant of the impacts on traffic access at Southwest Station. I totally agree with you there. And we also need to be concerned with, we as councilmembers need to be concerned with the potential impact on Southwest Transit. That's not part of the infrastructure deal. That's not part of what we're voting on today. But I think we need to be very strong advocates for Southwest Transit going forward to make sure that this excellent, excellent service that has been provided to our community for years and years continues to, to serve what is a great need, and a need that is satisfied to such a degree that we have continual surveys done of Southwest Transit riders who absolutely overwhelmingly love the service and would never use anything else. That being said, the way I see transportation is that it is important to have a robust multimodal transportation system. Right now, we really don't have that. If you want to get downtown, you have an option. You can take Southwest Transit. If you want to go anywhere else along the corridor, you pretty much have to drive your own car or bike, which is a little difficult here in the winter. So we don't really have multimodal options now. This provides us a multimodal option. And I think that there is going to be demand for this service that we, that the project office is aware of. They, they do the modeling and the studies. There are people in Eden Prairie that work along the line. They don't, they don't go downtown. They're not going to hop on light rail to get right downtown. They're hopping on light rail to get to their job at Abbott, not Abbott, at Methodist Hospital, or somewhere in St. Louis Park, or down near, closer to Lake Street. They're going to be using this for that purpose. They're, because the, the transit advantage in terms of time doesn't really go to light rail if you're making the full trip all the way downtown. Now, there will be people that take it now because they can hop on another line and get elsewhere around the whole metropolitan area, which is a big plus. But again, that's not what we're being asked to vote on today. I'm also concerned about that bridge over Technology and alongside Purgatory Creek Park. I don't really like it. But it, it is a city park. I mean, it looks like a bucolic out in the country park, but if you go there and you sit, you hear a roar of traffic on Highway Five. The tires on the pavement roaring down, you hear horns honking, you hear emergency vehicles going up and down. On the other side of the park, you have four lanes of traffic on Prairie Center Drive that, that whip cars around forty, forty-five miles an hour, again, with emergency vehicles, brakes, horns. Planes roar over that park from MSP. We have planes that come over there from Flying Cloud Airport, and we have the occasional helicopters. So it's not like some isolated park that noise has never hit. It's a very noisy park until you get way, way in it. So I'm concerned about the visual impact of what it does to the park, but I don't see any way around it. We've worked on this project for years and years. I've had the pleasure and the responsibility of representing Eden Prairie and Southwest Transit on various committees related to Southwest Light Rail for twelve-plus years. And I've tried to represent the city well in making sure that if this project comes to our city, that it is the most beneficial and has the least negative impacts. We were able to get it off of the regional rail trail, which was huge. That didn't really serve anybody. So the, the project office, the policy advisory committees, the technical advisory committee, the Met Council, they've listened to us on some of the issues related to Eden Prairie. And I am, I'm convinced that they will And I am convinced that they will continue to listen to us on some of the issues that we've identified, that we're concerned about. But again, I regret the loss of Mitchell Station. I think that's a mistake. But this project had to cut a lot of, a lot of money out of it, and it was really the only way to do it. So I am supportive of this project going forward, the changes.
So I've got a motion, and we've got a second. Anything else to add? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. The next item is a certificate of appropriateness for Glen Lake Children's Camp. Mr. Gettle.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What's before you tonight is action on a certificate of appropriateness for Glen Lake Children's Camp. Maybe as a bit of background, just the term certificate of appropriateness is something that is required when any change is made or needed at a historic designated site in the city of Eden Prairie. So if there are major construction projects, or demolition projects, major activity at any historic property, the Heritage Preservation Commission, the city council, have to act on a certificate of appropriateness. The item before you tonight is related to, as I said, Glen Lake Children's Camp in Eden Prairie. It's a property that the city leases to True Friends, and works with True Friends, whose mission is to provide life-changing experiences that enhance the independence and self-esteem for children and adults with disabilities. And we have the representative of True Friends, Randy Bozer, with us tonight. And True Friends is looking at an upgrade and a replacement of removing an existing swing set in constructing a modern, accessible play structure. True Friends, and also the city, we were both able to receive some grant funds to cover the cost of this construction, and then the city took on the role of being the general contractor, and that's that consent item that we removed that should be considered after a certificate of appropriateness. The project was recommended, considered, and recommended by the Park Commission, and also this certificate of appropriateness went through the Heritage Preservation Commission, and then comes to you this evening. So in the packet, you could see the plans for the play structure. So with that, I'm sure Mr. Bozer could probably give you a little bit of an overview, more so maybe about the equipment itself and the proposed project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. What we're proposing is to upgrade really a very old age swing set with a more modern playground at what we call Camp Edenwood, what you call Glen Lake Camp and Children's Camp. And what we've been doing is actually worked with the city to request a grant through Hennepin County, and got a match through a private donation through True Friends to be able to fund this playground. And our, went to the Heritage Preservation Commission because the location of the playground will be actually within the historic district within that camp. So the camp is kind of split. Part of it's within the district. Part of it is not historic. This playground will be within the historic district. So we worked with the Preservation Commission to design a playground that minimizes the amount of grading and changes to the landscape within the district, but also uses earth tones and natural colors and things like that to make sure it fits well within the look and feel of that historic district. So we had a presentation, I think a number of weeks ago, with the commission, and gained their concurrence with our process of moving forward with this playground. With that, I guess I'll add a couple of things. There's a couple of design elements to it that are, I think, make it special to us. One is, is it very accessible? We have a lot of our customers and campers that attend our services at Camp Edenwood that have mobility issues, whether physical disabilities or developmental disabilities. And so it is very accessible in terms of some of the equipment and things like that. It also has a very strong sensory environment. So there are sensory walls where you get sounds and movement and things like that that you can reach from the ground. You don't have to climb and things to get to those. And so we've done a lot of work with, again, vendors and the city to make sure that as much as possible of this play area is accessible to people with mobility issues, since that's a large population we serve. So I will answer any questions, obviously, but.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Bozer? Councilmember Wixton.
Yeah, I don't really have any questions, but I have a number of comments.
Okay.
And so I actually have a lot of concerns about this.
Okay.
First of all, I have concerns about the certificate of appropriateness. I think to remove the existing swing and construct a modern play structure is not a bad idea, but the expansion of, I mean, this was a single set of swings. And so now this is a very large play area, playground equipment. So I'm very concerned about that. This is a national register site. It's a very important historic site to the city of Eden Prairie and the state of Minnesota. I think it's one of two in the nation of its significance, historic significance. And then I'm sure you know that this camp once operated as a camp for children with tuberculosis. So anyway, not only is the site historically important, but the landscape is historically important. It's important to the state of Minnesota, and it's also important to the HPC. So while, of course, I agree with the idea of providing some playground equipment, I have to talk about some of the concerns that I have. Yeah, you can see, it's a very large play structure. I think the materials are inappropriate for a historic site. I think that setting is rustic. I don't think the colors are particularly appropriate either. I think that, I mean, just that the watershed district is reviewing the amount of earth or dirt taken from this area is kind of, I'd like to hear what happens with that. But Janet, can you talk about how big this is and all the aspects of it that there are? And where exactly the location is on that historic property?
Your Honor, councilmembers, there are several pieces of equipment. The large play structure that I had up originally is one of them. And then there is also a replacement of the swing set. And there's kind of a merry-go-round type of structure for the handicapped, as well as something they call the comet, this structure, and a couple of these types of swings. My understanding is that the whole play area itself is about 90 feet by 80 feet. And because of the grade, there is the soil moving and about a three-foot retaining wall to get that entire area flat. It is pretty far into the site, and I have to admit that I'm not the best at talking about the different buildings. So perhaps Mr. Bozer could describe the use of the various buildings around it. But if they can focus in on this one a little bit, you will see probably the building that most people are familiar with over here. And then this is the area of the playground.
And the historic buildings, for reference, are this building here, and then a building over here that you can't see. Those are two historic buildings. There's five historic components to the site. One is this gravel road that runs up along here. That's hard to see with the trees and runs all the way back here. A second is a stone monument next to that road. A third is this building. A fourth is this building. And a fifth historic component is a garage right back here. So the playground isn't, what we've done is really replace an existing swing set, which is sitting right here. And we've worked hard to keep the playground as far away from any of those historic components as possible. And just to clarify, the landscape work that we're doing here, we did work with the watershed district. They have reviewed this and said that we do not need any sort of rainwater runoff approval or anything. The only thing we need is soil erosion approval for the work that's being done, because we are actually minimizing the amount of earth that we're moving. The largest retaining wall that we will have on the site here, I think, is about two feet to two and a half feet. We have reduced, again, working with the city and the contractors to design this in a way that we can build this playground on a slight slope and also build it in different components. So it's not one big flat, you know, 90 by 60-foot surface. It's multiple areas with grades and slopes to them, such that we minimize the amount of impact that we have on the site. And that was a lot of the discussion we had with the Preservation Commission also.
Your Honor, councilmembers, I'm showing the material of the retaining wall, but this is not the design of it. It would be lower than the terrace wall that you're seeing in this.
Yeah, that's just for illustration of the types of material we will use. They'll be natural colors. Again, what you saw in some of the equipment, the bright colors and things like that, those won't be used. All of the colors will be either green or tan. The big equipment, all of them will be of that color. So there will be three colors. There will be a burgundy, a tan, and a green. Those are the only colors that will be there.
To clarify, and obviously, the packet shows that the HPC voted, recommended approval. And was that either a condition, or that was quite a bit of discussion at that commission level about the colors and the, how they could best fit into the area? Understanding it's still quite a bit of play equipment, but is some of that where that came from?
We actually had some preliminary discussions with them, which led us to work with the vendors to find colors that we thought would be acceptable, and to do grading, and multiple changes with our engineers to do grading in such a way that we minimize retaining walls and minimize soil movement and things like that. So the discussion with the commission had two components to it. One was follow-up to make sure that we could get all of the equipment in those three colors, which we could. And the second one was a final grading plan, the one we worked with the commission on at the time. Still had some retaining walls that were higher than I wanted them to be, and we went back to the engineers and were able to get some additional changes that will enable us to reduce the size of those retaining walls.
Is this going to require any sidewalks or trails, paved trails, to get from one pod to another?
No, there's already a trail that leads up to the current swing set, so that's where you will access the current playground. And there will be a slope that will be ADA acceptable between the different areas.
Okay. Councilmember Wixton.
Yes, Ms. Jeremiah, could you tell me what the primary material is of all of these components? What will this be built from?
My understanding is that it's kind of the typical play structure, kind of the, I believe it's a recycled plastic material, or, I'm not the playground person, obviously. This was a bad meeting for Mr. Latimer to miss. But perhaps.
And I'm not a playground expert either. I would tell you that the poles and the supporting structure is a coated steel. I think it's a stainless steel that, or a steel that's made for playgrounds. And then the slides and things like that are composite, strong, tight plastic that is typically used in playgrounds. So it's, the materials are what you would typically find in a playground. The surface will be wood chips and wood fiber, so it will all be natural in terms of the surface of the ground. But the structure itself will be what you typically find. With a few exceptions, obviously, we are pretty diligent about the color. The other thing we did is we kept the profile as low as possible, so not to obstruct the view of trees and other things around, so you won't see any umbrellas or any of the other things that you sometimes see on top of playgrounds. All of these will be a lower profile. We did away with a higher climbing net and some things like that, that, again, we felt didn't fit well on the site.
Okay. I have a question, and that is, granted, you're not a city building a park, but my understanding is that standards for appropriate park equipment, safety of park equipment, they change so fast. I know that we've had that issue with our parks, where you build a new park, and, you know, within a year, it no longer meets the safety standards of the industry. So I guess my question is, could you even expand, could you rebuild what you currently have? I mean, if you take this down, what you currently have, you have to put up something like this, don't you?
What we currently have is just a standard, probably 30-year-old swing set.
Right, so my point is, you couldn't build that again.
You couldn't build that again. No. And it doesn't, it's not accessible. It's not sensory. It's not, it doesn't really meet the needs of our customers, of the people we serve. And that's one of the challenges we have with it, and so.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, I, you know, I look at, our Heritage Preservation Commission voted 7 to 0. They were okay with this. It seems to be beyond the actual historic area, though it's not too far away. There's a piece of use, though, that I like to think that, at the time, they put up swing sets that were the best that they could do for the kids that needed to be there and had a disability for that time. And I sort of like the idea of replacing it with a current updated swing set that's the best we can do for the handicaps or the kids who are using it now. It seems like there's a use for this particular land that's in harmony with the original use at the site. And I do like that. I wouldn't like it if it was right out in front of the old cabins, but it seems to be beyond that road from, it looks like, from your pictures. And then the fact that our Heritage Preservation Commission seemed to be comfortable with it, given their votes. If this, if they had come to us with a vote of 4 to 3 or something, I would be less comfortable, but that's not what happened. So I think this looks like a fun place that isn't going to harm the historical nature of it and is perhaps in keeping with the spirit of what might have been started a long time ago.
Councilmember Case.
Well, first, truly, sincerely, I want to thank Sheri for all the work through the years in truly taking a stand to protect our history. And so your insights and opinions are always really valuable. I think I agree with Kathy on this, that I'm comfortable to a certain extent because anything that's being done, it feels like could be undone, as opposed to taking down one of those precious buildings, or changing something about the site that we could not, at some point, undo. And you've really taught me more than anyone about adaptive reuse, and how do we take these historic properties and preserve the integrity of the history, and then also allow them to come in to this century, used so that they will also be saved and preserved. So it feels like this is not a bad compromise to try to do that. Let this camp be used by children, which is a wonderful continuation of a legacy, and let them have an amazing facility to play in that doesn't damage the historical integrity to the extent that couldn't be changed back or undone if this camp no longer has this purpose 30 years from now, and it's sadly mothballed or something, you know, into some kind of non-use. So I'm comfortable with this tonight, but I just did want to say I really do appreciate your perspective. And just watch, your watchdogness. I think it's really important to have people like you watching over our city historic properties.
Thank you. Councilmember Wixton.
Yes, it actually is in the historic landscape, so, yeah.
Even though it's beyond the road?
I believe so.
Well, Mr. Bozer said it was. My understanding is that it's in the area, but it's not an historic element, that ground, as is the road or the buildings.
Right, but it's still in that historic, so we call it context, that historic context. And that's the problem that I'm having with this. Of course, having a play area for children, in fact, we really need to make sure that that's what the use of this historic property is. I mean, that's sort of been our agreement with Hennepin County. However, I think we can do better than this. That's what I guess I'm trying to say. And I don't want to settle on something that feels so outside the context of what this very rustic, and that's what this was built for. It was a very rustic camp for kids with tuberculosis. And I'm sure you've seen the pictures of those children from the '30s and the '40s. This just feels so jarring to me as a historic preservationist that I'm having a lot of difficulty with it. And so did the HPC. They voted for it in the end, probably because of the same reasons that we feel so strongly about it. It's for kids. Kids with disabilities. reasons that we feel so strongly about it, is it's for kids, kids with disabilities who could, you know, gain from it. I just honestly think we could do better, and I think we should do better. We're known for our historic preservation integrity and commitment. So, but anyway, there were lots of questions. I read the minutes from the Historic Preservation Commission, and they had concerns too. So, it wasn't like, green light, let's go. They, there's a lot of discussion about it. But like I said, I think that they were probably pulled, like I feel and like we feel. But honestly, I, I just, I really think we could do better than this. We've done better in the past. I think about the Smith Douglas Morehouse and all the things we went through, looking at that. Anyway, I, you know, I don't often disagree with staff or the commission, but this is one time that I do.
Okay. Councilmember Aho?
You know, I really do appreciate your sentiments regarding, you know, the historic nature and, and all of that. I, I, I just don't know what we would do differently. I mean, you know, you're saying that we, we should do, could and should do better. It's just that, you know, I think when you have to reconstruct a play structure in today's standards, I don't know that you're given a lot of options in terms of what materials you could use and what pieces of equipment you can buy, because, you know, you, you have to, you have to get this, this equipment from someone. And, and I think everyone is, that's in business today, providing this equipment, is going to provide, you know, very similar types of products. I mean, they're going to be steel poles, you know, with coated poles with plastic slides. And, you know, I mean, I, I just don't know if you could build it in such a way that it would still keep that historic look, but yet provide the level of safety and, and meet the standards of today. And especially when you're really trying to adapt it to, you know, probably a different use than the initial, I mean, we look at that initial swing set that's there now currently, and we say, well, that really wouldn't meet today's standards, wouldn't be ADA compliant, wouldn't provide the, the kind of facility that really meets the needs of the, of the people that are, are being served by this facility. And I, I just don't know, you know, it'd be nice if we could do something that was historic-looking, but I, I just don't know that that's a possibility. And I think, you know, the prob, if, if you could even find the materials or construct it from scratch, I think the mater, the cost would be not, would be prohibitive and not fall within what we have, you know, set aside for this. And so, you know, I think in this way, we have to maybe sometimes compromise. And, and I think it'll be a good, good structure for the kids. And I think they'll really, you know, really enjoy it and appreciate it. And, you know, maybe it isn't as historic as we would like, but I don't know that we have really a lot of options.
You don't know. And I think that's my point, is that I think we need to see if there's a possibility, to see if there's another design, another kinds of material. You know, we're going to the National League of Cities, and we see lots of fantastic materials that come out of the, the vendors. I just don't think we've done enough work on this. That's my comment. And I, I'm going to shut up. I'm not going to say anymore. I promise. I'm done.
This is a dilemma, though, because we're thrilled that Camp Edenwood is there, using the facility in the way that it was originally intended to a certain degree for a slightly different population. But you're protecting a lot of the historical integrity of, of the site. But yet, in order to function in today's world and with today's legal system of getting sued for things that aren't up to code, we're reaching this kind of impasse between what we would ideally like in terms of the aesthetic and historic preservation with the practical safety needs. Councilmember Case, I think you were next.
I guess I'd go back to the fact that in all of our dealings, and I guess you could even say fights over the years to, to preserve historic properties and structures, and even you use the Dunn Brothers as an example, when the addition kitchen was put on the, at the coffee shop, at the time, the intent was it can be taken off. If, if we need this to pass muster for heritage or for...
Adaptive use.
No, for the National Register, you know, status, it can be taken off. I don't, that's why I like this, because this can be undone. And, and at the point therefore about, is it materials? I, I've got to defer to someone else who knows what's best for this type of child with these disabilities. I, I don't think that, maybe there is an option out there that meets history and disability needs, but I defer that again. I don't know that. And so, I, I'm trusting this process that they do or that our staff has overseen that. If it's location, I'm, I'm concerned. But again, I'm deferring to the people that are on this site day in, day out, that for the, for the sake of the kids, this might be the best spot. Maybe there is a better spot historically that these children with disabilities would have to walk than a football field to get to. So, I, I think because this can be undone, I'm going to defer the decision and, and the details to the people that know what they're doing. Let them do it. From a historical standpoint, if it's not right in 10 years or 20 years, we, we, you know, undo it and bring it back to its original state. As long as the buildings are not touched, as long as the historic part of it stays intact.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, just briefly, you know, in other parts of the country where they have more historic places that are open to the public and they have playgrounds. I've seen a lot of attempts to make it look original and yet meet current requirements. And quite frankly, plastic things that are supposed to look like logs don't. And they are not an addition at all, in my opinion. You take one look at it and you said, oh, they made a plastic thing that's supposed to look like a log. Yeah, I don't, I'm pretty sure that this, as long as their color scheme surrounds the fact that they can be taken out, and they seem to be a good use for it. I think it's going to be okay. And I guess, I, I don't want to, this is one case, I don't know if I really want the Disney eyes to look plastic into something previous. And, yeah, I just don't see how, unless you're going to use real logs, I don't know if that's what we need for here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Otherwise, it's a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this camp, this issue?
See, and I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the findings of fact and approve certificate of appropriateness 2015-01-001 for the removal of existing swing set.
We do.
And construction of modern accessible play structure.
Is there a second? Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Do we do something now with the item that was on consent calendar related to this?
We, we do, Mayor. You need to vote on item K, which would be approving a contract with St. Quay Recreation for the purchase of playground equipment for Camp Edenwood.
Is there a motion?
So, move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second. Any items to question? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Terrell Lukens?
Aye.
We just have one final thing on the agenda, and that's reports of councilmembers. Councilmember Nelson?
Just something quick. I think many of you may have gotten this notice as well from Prop, but right now, their food shelves are as low as they've almost ever been. And I would just like to encourage those members of the community who haven't gone through their pantries recently to get out those cans of soup or whatever that you thought you were going to like and somehow haven't been used and are still good, that now would be a great time to do that, and let's fill up their pantries again. And it's, you know, it's the time of year where kids are going back to school that maybe some folks are a little more stretched for food because of school close and costs. And I think we need to let people know as far as we can that these food shelves do need to be filled back up right now. It's sort of sad when you see the picture of the shelf being virtually empty.
Okay. Thank you for that reminder. Mr. Gettle?
Yeah, I do, Mayor. One item to add from earlier in the meeting. I was able to find out that when we were talking about the Ice Castles item, and Councilmember Case was asking about public safety, that Ice Castles did pay for any extra policing that was needed for traffic control. So, that did occur, and obviously, if needed, would occur again. So, I was able to get that answered in the course of the meeting.
Good. Great. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Vote to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.